The April 30th, 2021 virtual meeting of the Anarundel County Council is now in session. Welcome to the first day of AAR-22 budget deliberations. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Pickard.
Present.
Mr. Volkey.
Present.
Mr. Pruski.
Here.
Ms. Fiedler.
Present.
Ms. Rodvian.
Present.
Ms. Hare.
Present.
Ms. Lacy.
Present.
Legislative Council, Ms. Schewitt. County Auditor, Ms. Bowler.
Present.
Madam Chair, everyone is present. We're ready to go.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please pause for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance to be led by Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to take this moment actually to thank all of my colleagues for the hard work that we've done over the last couple of months, working together on the GDP. Looking forward to the next 45 days of hard work with all of you as we evaluate the budget that's coming forward. I think there has been a lot of collaboration in the last couple of months on this work, and I'm looking forward to seeing the same thing in the next 45 days. I will say that it's been a lot of long hours, and I really just appreciate all of that time that we have all spent working through all of these things. So with that, thank you, and let's get to work once again. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Madam Secretary.
The county attorney has asked me to read the following statement. "The Maryland Open Meetings Act is a state law that requires public meetings to be open to the public and to be held in places reasonably accessible to individuals who would like to attend these meetings. The virtual format of this meeting of the county council is due to the COVID-19 pandemic and is necessary in light of the serious health risks associated with public gatherings. While a virtual meeting of this type was not envisioned by the Open Meetings Act, steps have been taken to ensure that this virtual meeting includes alternate accessibility features that the Open Meetings Act Compliance Board and the courts have reviewed and approved, such as having a call-in phone number that allows anyone with a telephone to call and listen to the meeting and broadcasting the meeting with video and audio on cable TV and on the web. The public access provided by this technology makes this virtual meeting reasonably accessible to the public as required by the Open Meetings Act. This technology also satisfies the intent of the rules and procedure of the county council that apply to meetings, and they do not need to be waived in order for this virtual meeting to be held."
Thank you. Good morning to everyone watching and listening. Today's agenda is posted right at aacounty.org. The proposed fiscal year, or FY '22, budget will be posted on the county website after this meeting. It is my pleasure to introduce a video message from our county executive, Stuart Hibbin.
Madam Chair and members of the council, I'm about to play that. I would ask that everyone mute themselves, turn off their video, and ensure that your volume is turned up.
Thank you, Chairwoman Lacy, Vice Chairwoman Rodvian, council members Pickard, Pruski, Volkey, Fiedler, and Hare, for inviting me to present our proposed fiscal year 2022 budget. Last year, I described our budget proposal as a path forward through uncertain times. We reduced revenue projections in the face of a global pandemic, and we tightened our belt. That allowed us to end the year with a healthy fund balance. This year will be better. When I took office, we changed the budget process to hear more voices and be more transparent. We held seven budget town halls and then built a budget to meet the needs that people identified. Then, we set tax rates at the level needed to fund that progress. Those rates remain some of the lowest in the state and the lowest in our region. We intend to keep it that way, not just this year, but into the future. Income tax rates in this budget remain at 2.81% compared to 3.2% for neighboring counties. And we're reducing property tax rates slightly to 93.3 cents. That first budget included our new Permanent Public Improvements Fund for schools, roads, and public safety infrastructure. It reduced class sizes in our schools while gradually bringing teacher pay to the levels they were promised when we hired them, and it brought police and firefighter pay to the average levels for our region. In our first budget, we made a course correction. In our second budget, we tightened our belt. And with the budget I submit to you today, we put ourselves back on track. This budget helps us achieve four basic goals. Restore trust in government, create economic opportunity for all, implement smart growth policies, and promote health and wellness. These are the principles that guide us, not only as we budget, but also as we govern. As county executive, I work with my staff and all of our agencies to make sure that we engage residents, share information, monitor performance metrics, and deliver on promises. That's how we save our residents' money while providing the services we need to put us back on track. Thankfully, our interest rates reflect our sound fiscal management. By refinancing bonds just last month, we saved taxpayers $37 million. Our reserves are strong enough that we believe we can improve our next bond rating, and we're able to pay upfront for $65 million of capital improvements this year, thanks to our healthy fund balance. When I took office, the capital budget exceeded a very important thing called debt affordability by $76 million. I was unwilling to continue down that unsustainable path, so we made a plan to get us to zero. This chart shows the path we took to get there. But that's not the only thing we did in this budget to put our county in a stronger fiscal position. We also added to our pension fund contributions by way of a conservative budgeting maneuver that bond rating agencies love. We lowered our estimate of what those pension funds will earn in the future from 7.45% to 7.0%, meaning that even if the economy slows down, support will be there for our employees and retirees when they need it. My final comment on the capital budget is a congratulations and thank you to our teams at Information Technology and Public Works for creating this new mapping tool that residents can use to learn about the projects in their neighborhoods. We want you to watch what we're doing, so please take a look. No aspect of government relies on public trust more than public safety, the most fundamental obligation of government, and therefore, an essential public investment. While state lawmakers debated the policies and processes to address the moments in policing when things go wrong, our own police chief, Amal Awad, moved forward with her leadership team to make sure things go right, and as is so often the case, moved a step or two ahead of the rest of Maryland. The Body worn Camera Program was last year's budget news, but this year's work. Go to our webpage at aacounty.org/BodyWornCameras for all the news about how it works and the new policies that accompany it. Transparency, trust, and respect are the foundation of our work, and this program enhances all three. Crisis Intervention Team International recognized our crisis intervention teams as the best in the world last year, demonstrating the impact of investing in and training world-class personnel. Demand for those services increased this year, so we're proposing, in this budget, a major investment to grow the program. Four new CIT officers plus six and a half crisis intervention counselors in the mental health agency budget. The most significant change in the police department is the creation of a community services bureau. Today, we have administrative services, operations and investigations, and patrol services. But the addition of a major position in this budget allows us to elevate community services to the status it deserves. If you've not yet visited our magnificent new police training academy, please do. It was a long overdue investment in the future of policing in our county that we should all be very proud of. The same goes for the central processing building at Jennifer Road. But we have more to do in our police capital budget. Both the evidence and forensics facility and the special operations facility will be built in FY '22, and we hope to bring forward a new police and fire joint 911 call center in next year's capital program. Our firefighters are second to none, and delivering a pay package that was worthy of their sacrifice and professionalism last year was the right thing to do. This year, our decision to move forward with our federal safer grant helped us increase our staffing by 50, but we were warned that many of our trucks were beyond their useful life, and we needed replacements. This year, we're increasing funding by $3.8 million for a total of $5.4 million, a major boost to the replacement program. Our fire stations also need upgrades and expansions. We opened the brand-new Galesville Station during the pandemic, and we have Cape St. Clair, Herald Harbor, Jessup, Watch Apple, and Arundel, all in the pipeline in that order. But the big project is the long-awaited and sorely-needed fire training academy. This budget includes funding for land acquisition in FY '22 and design funding in the future years. We're all aware that most of the calls to our fire stations are not for fires. It's the emergency medical calls that keep them so busy. That's why this budget increases funding to train 42 new paramedics, triple the number in an average year. For many years, the county has known that we should have a deputy in every courtroom. We added two in FY '20, and after tightening our belt in FY '21, we're back on track this year, adding two more deputies in the FY '22 budget. We also continued the signing bonus program piloted last year and added funds for officer training. Coronavirus made for a stressful year in our jails, and I want to thank every officer who did the hard work of protecting the health of inmates and coworkers. All of this was done while integrating the new central booking facility into the Jennifer Road operation. This budget provides additional security cameras, upgraded equipment, and a study to assess the feasibility of consolidating the system at a single facility. And then there's the Office of Emergency Management. Preeti Emmerich stepped up to the director position in the midst of the pandemic and is coordinating our recovery work. Under her leadership, we're enhancing our preparedness for modern-day disaster scenarios with two new emergency planner positions in this budget. The pandemic has laid bare the weaknesses in the foundation of our economy and showed us clearly that families at the low end of our economic scale are vulnerable. This budget will help us rebuild our economy from the bottom up while putting us back on track to meet the goals we set at the start of our administration: economic development corporation and workforce development. I mention them together because they are two halves of a solution, and during the pandemic, they together delivered direct assistance, more than 7,000 debit cards to impacted workers, and 1,932 grants to struggling businesses. This year, workforce development will expand its summer jobs program, and EDC will continue its new inclusive ventures program for minority businesses. Both organizations will be using federal funds to build back better from this pandemic. On the topic of federal grants, I should note that our community grants program, a small community-based nonprofits, will expand from $700,000 to a projected distribution of $1.9 million in FY '22. More than half of what you pay in taxes is spent educating young people. Top-quality education is the greatest driver of economic growth, enhancer of property values, reducer of poverty, and guarantor of our future. It matters a lot. We took the politics out of school construction decisions by pledging to follow the recommendations of the MGT study in our capital program. Thanks to the $125 million commitment from the new Permanent Public Improvements Fund, we're back on track. Construction started this month at Old Mill West High and Quarterfield Elementary, and will begin very soon at Hillsmary Elementary and Rippling Woods Elementary, and design will be underway for West County Elementary very soon. After decades of neglect, our school buildings are getting the attention they need and our kids deserve. This year's operating budget presented challenges. The school board budget request was for $83 million over last year's funding, but we had a drop in unrestricted state funds from $15.6 million to less than $1 million due to the pandemic-related enrollment decrease. Both teacher pay and new positions are recurring expenses in future years, so it would be irresponsible to pay for them using one-time funds. We had to prioritize. A school is only as good as the people who work in it. And if we want to bring out the best in the good people who work in our schools, we must do for them what we have done recently for our police and firefighters. We must provide compensation that is competitive with their peers in nearby counties. That's why this budget funds a full-step increase and a 1% COLA for all four units of AACPS employees. But there's more. We made history in our first budget by paying back steps. It was an effort to acknowledge the value of experience and to make progress on a promise. This year, we're back on track toward making everyone whole with an $8 million investment in back steps. That amount is about half of the total remaining. I never made promises about future budgets, but my hope is that with a similar investment next year, we can make all of our educators whole in the final budget of my first term. What we're not able to do was to fund all of the new positions that the school board requested. We are able to deliver on the highest priorities. This budget funds 53 essential new positions, including 26 for Crofton High School, 7.5 for behavioral health, 7.5 for special education, 6 for English language acquisition, 2 to support all-day pre-K, and 2.5 positions to implement the Enhancing Elementary Excellence, or TEE, program in the Glen Burnie Cluster. The total package is $34.5 million over FY '21 funding and $15.7 million over state-required maintenance of effort, a major step forward on our commitment to deliver economic opportunity for all. Anybody following education in America today understands that as the cost of private colleges and universities have skyrocketed out of the range of most families, community colleges have become the key to opportunity for millions. This year, Anarundel Community College got the recognition we knew it deserved, being deemed the very best community college in the United States of America by Forbes Magazine. Thanks to an important decision by the Maryland General Assembly to fully fund community colleges this year, and an extra $1 million in county support, the community college's FY '22 budget will be fully funded. That means that our community will continue to benefit from an outstanding curriculum and top-quality teaching for everyone in our county of any age who seeks new skills and new knowledge. Implementing smart growth policies is hard work, but the investments that we propose in this budget will put us back on track to protect our natural environment, promote good development where infrastructure exists, and improve the quality of our residents' lives. Anarundel County residents understand how land use impacts our environment, our health, and our economic opportunity. That's why Plan 2040, Move Anarundel, the Land Preservation Parks and Recreation Plan, the Green Infrastructure Master Plan, the Odenton Town Center Plan, the Parole Town Center Plan, and the forthcoming region plans are so important. But plans mean nothing without implementation. Filling the positions that we need at the Office of Planning, zoning, and inspections and permits has been slow, and that will change. If we want good development to happen, we must fund the staff positions to review applications and process documents efficiently. Good news on that front is the Land Use Navigator. It will finally move the review and permitting processes online, making them faster and more accessible to the public. The original contractor's poor performance delayed the project, but we are back on track and ready for Phase 1 deployment in the fall. Inspections and permits are filling vacancies and also building out a new stormwater strike team to inspect not only the development sites, but also the nearby land where flooding and erosion actually take place. OPZ will fill vacancies and add three new planners, moving us closer to the pre-recession staffing levels and ensuring that Plan 2040 does not sit on a shelf collecting dust. We will rebuild the county's reforestation fund and are creating a new forest conservation mitigation fund so that public projects can meet the standards of our forest conservation law. We have legislation before the county council to create the state's first full-service resilience authority to manage financing and construction of projects that protect our infrastructure from the impacts of climate change. And this budget provides the seed money to implement that legislation. And to slow down that climate change, we are funding the planning of electric vehicle charging stations for our EV-driving residents and our future EV county fleet. Anarundel County must continue to lead the state and the country in building a greener, smarter, and more equitable future. Department of Public Works continues working for you to provide clean water, to responsibly manage our waste, to protect our waterways, and to build and maintain multimodal transportation infrastructure with guidance from our Office of Transportation. We all know about the failing intersections on the Route 2 and Route 3 corridors. Through our own financial commitment and hard work, we are now in the process of executing a memorandum of agreement with Maryland State Highways to finally move forward on a long-awaited solution. Secretary Slater and his team have been outstanding to work with at the state level, and we are perfectly poised to benefit from any forthcoming federal infrastructure investments. Our good friend Congressman Anthony Brown sits on the House Committee on Transportation and Infrastructure, and our senators support our efforts. I have always said that government should be judged by the health and wellness of its residents, and that means all residents. This budget invests in programs to do just that. COVID infections and income loss during the last year were most prevalent by far among the lowest-income residents of our county. The departments that I'm about to discuss have done extraordinary work this last year with the help of federal funding, but we must step up as a county to address these needs in the future. Libraries serve our people at every stage of life, and we are making them better. We opened the magnificent Michael E. Bush Annapolis Branch during the pandemic and broke ground at Rivera Beach just a few weeks ago, still in our masks. In the pipeline are Glen Burnie in two years and Millersville just a year after that. Our beloved senior activity centers will soon reopen and continue to improve. We got the work done on the Brooklyn Park Center before the pandemic hit, and expansion is well underway at the South County Center in Edgewater. Next in line are improvements and expansion at Arnold and the brand-new Severn Center, which I will discuss in a moment. With 47 active capital projects in our six-year plan, recreation and parks continues to create the public spaces that enhance our health and connect us to nature. We got a much-needed $9 million boost in funding this year, thanks to support from House Speaker Adrian Jones and our hard-working delegation at the Maryland General Assembly. We are creating better park access for people with disabilities, a new Odenton Library Park, a Jug Bay Environmental Education Center, and an extensive facelift to facilities at Quiet Waters. With completion of the Broadneck Trail and major progress on both the South Shore and WBNA Trails, we're transforming the idea of a county-wide trail network from a concept to reality. My goal is to complete the system by 2026 and be fit enough to ride the whole thing with John Corin and bike advocates of Anarundel. Also in the Rec and Parks budget, we have additional funding for water access projects, completing Phase 1 of the Brooklyn Park Athletic Complex, moving up construction of the New Deal Community Park, and, drumroll, please, the long-awaited and much-needed West County Swim Center will be designed in the FY '22 budget. We've also increased the size of our annual maintenance grants to park user groups and added two seasonal trail staff and a ranger at Lake Waterford. I have one last area of capital investment that was sorely missing from this county's agenda for far too long: community centers. Particularly, community centers in neighborhoods where poverty is highest and young people need stuff to do. We have four communities of hope designated by our Partnership for Children, Youth, and Families. They are Brooklyn Park, West County, Annapolis, and South County. And my goal is to have a community center in each. The Severn Center, adjacent to Van Bocklen Elementary, will serve West County. After 30 years of community advocacy to get this done, we will break ground this fall. Thanks to a mix of funding sources that was completed with a phone call near the end of session with Senate President Bill Ferguson, that call and the hard work of our delegation produced the final $2.8 million for this $16 million project. Annapolis received $600,000 from the state this year to improve the Stanton Center, and we added the Brooklyn Park Teen Center to our capital budget for design this year. We have some irons in the fire for a South County Center as well that I hope to announce at next year's budget address, rounding out the program and serving generations to come. On the childcare front, I want to thank the Rec and Parks team. They moved operations this past year from schools to senior centers and swim centers, back to schools, and now are stepping up to operate 10 open-door centers that were going out of business. This budget includes a significant new investment to fairly compensate the professional staff who operate these essential and outstanding Rec and Parks childcare centers. We have an extraordinary organization in our county called the Partnership for Children, Youth, and Families. They connect private foundations, government, community groups, and residents to help families in need. As state priorities shifted over the years, their funding dwindled, and the county never stepped up to secure their future. In this budget, we are stepping up. Another hero of COVID is the Arundel Community Development Services team. From water bill and foreclosure assistance to administering grants for the county's nonprofits, ACDS performed flawlessly. Their eviction prevention work became a model for all Maryland counties. The Department of Social Services delivered this year for our most vulnerable residents, particularly the ones who, due to COVID, could not find space in shelters or the church-based winter relief program. They worked with Arundel House of Hope and other agencies to provide an alternative hotel-based shelter that is now year-round and must continue. This budget funds continuation of that shelter and provides the compensation that we need to keep our homeless outreach workers on the job. Our Department of Aging and Disabilities offered programming to reach its clients when they could not gather at our senior centers. Staff made more than 105,000 check-in calls, distributed more than half a million meals, and provided online programming to keep our older adults connected and safe. This budget funds a position in the Family Caregiver Program, freeing up grant funds for direct services. The sign outside our Department of Health headquarters says, "Heroes work here," and it's true. They delivered with universal contact tracing and case management from day one, a community-based equity task force at the outset, testing, enforcement, and a vaccination program that combines efficiency, customer service, and deep reach into underserved communities. All of this took place while standing up the programs we funded last year: the revival of Healthy Anarundel, the Office of Health Equity and Racial Justice, and staffing for the interagency task forces on opioids and gun violence. New federal funding provides us with the resources for COVID testing, tracing, and vaccination programs so that we can end the pandemic and get back to life as we knew it. Another investment that I want to note is $200,000 to move forward Another investment that I want to note is $200,000 to move forward on the Limited English Proficiency Plan that pays for translation services. Our commitment to governing for all means that information must be accessible to all. The final investment that I must highlight in this budget has a value that is not about helping people and not about the environment. It supports the work we do on behalf of animals in need. Thanks to passionate advocacy by volunteers at Animal Care and Control, we have proposed funding for new position, new cat cages, and veterinary services. These animals have a way of bringing out the best in humans, and we humans should do our best for the animals. I will end by noting that trust in government is earned, and our public servants know that. But the harsh winds of politics often blow straight in their faces as they serve and protect us. That was especially true in this politically divided year. But across county government, our people set politics aside and delivered to every resident, not only on the services they were hired for, but also whatever we asked of them as soldiers in the war against COVID-19. I particularly want to thank the core service agencies without whom none of government services would exist: central services, law, finance, personnel, and of course, the team and budget who guides us all through this process. They ask for very little, and they give every single day. I also want to note that the team in the county executive's office has become one of the strongest in the state. Community Engagement and Constituent Services never waivers in its commitment to engagement of all residents, whether they agree with their perspectives or not. And our small but mighty Arundel Stat delivers Open Arundel, the portal through which all of us can monitor performance metrics across all government agencies. My Chief Administrative Officer, Matt Power, and Chief of Staff Kay Bodges to Brown rarely sleep, but never complain. And our Government Affairs Team, led by Pete Barron, has found allies for the county at every level of government, particularly, I hope, with the body that determines the fate of this budget. Finally, I must highlight the thoughtful and deliberate path we took in creating this budget. We listened carefully to residents, department directors, and financial experts, and we made tough choices. Throughout the process, we stayed focused on our four basic goals: restore trust in government, create economic opportunity for all, implement smart growth policies, and promote health and wellness. I look forward to working with all seven of you in the coming weeks as you execute your duty to carefully review this proposal and adopt a budget so that we can enter the new fiscal year with optimism and confidence. This budget is fiscally responsible and fair. It puts us back on track after a challenging year and will make Anarundel County the best place for all far into the future.
Thank you, Mr. County Executive. May I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
Councilman Pusky, so moved.
Second, Allison Picker.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the budget bills.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Bill Number 3221: An Ordnance Concerning Annual Budget and Appropriation Ordinance of Anarundel County. Bill Number 3321: An Ordnance Concerning Tax Levees, Special Community Benefit Districts, Shore Erosion Controll Districts, and Waterways Improvement Districts. Bill Number 3421: An Ordnance Concerning Tax Levees, Arundel Gateway Special Taxing District. Bill Number 3521: An Ordnance Concerning Tax Levees, Arundel Mills Special Taxing District. Bill Number 3621: An Ordnance Concerning Tax Levees, Dorchester Special Taxing District. Bill Number 3721: An Ordnance Concerning Tax Levees, Farmington Village Special Taxing District. Bill Number 3821: An Ordnance Concerning Tax Levees, National Business Park Special Taxing District. Bill Number 3921: An Ordnance Concerning Tax Levees, National Business Park North Special Taxing District. Bill Number 4021: An Ordnance Concerning Tax Levees, Two Rivers Special Taxing District. Bill Number 4121: An Ordnance Concerning Tax Levees, Village South at Wall Chapel Special Taxing District. Bill Number 4221: An Ordnance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget, Arts Council of Anarundel County Special Revenue Fund, Annapolis and Anarundel County Conference and Visitor Bureau Special Revenue Fund. Bill Number 4321: An Ordnance Concerning Public Works, Solid Waste Collection, Solid Waste Service Charge, Solid Waste Landfill and Facility Delivery Fees. Bill Number 4421: An Ordnance Concerning Property Tax and Semiannual Payment Service Charge. That concludes the bills.
Thank you for letting me know. Certainly, a lot of bills that we'll be talking about. And with that, we'll go into the first of three budget presentations today. We'll be hearing from the Planning Advisory Board.
Good morning, Madam Chair and the members of the county council. Can everybody hear me all right?
Good morning. We can, but you're a little scratchy.
Okay. My name is Gus Kurtz. I reside at 7635 Janine Avenue in Sedina, Maryland. We currently have members of the PAB board Jerry Pesterfield, who was our chair, and he's in California at his daughter's 50th birthday party. I am the vice chair, and I'll present to you the budget. We also have members of the PAB: Kendrick Faison, Gloria Dent, Calvin Wilson, Elizabeth Rothberg, and Melanie Hartwick-Davis. And I would like to thank all of the PAB members for their time and hard work on this budget. As stated in the Anarundel County Charter, Sections 532 and 533, the Planning Advisory Board shall make recommendations to the Planning and Zoning Officer, County Executive, and the County Council relating to the master plans, the zoning maps, rules, regulations. And in addition, the PAB shall consider and transmit recommendations concerning amendments to the capital budget for each fiscal year. The PAB understands the budgetary constraints that continue to be experienced by the county and the state of Maryland and the impact these constraints have on the current CIP. Therefore, as with our recommendations to you in the interim deliberation letter dated March 11, 2021, our final deliberation recommendations remain based on our understanding of the need to be fiscally conservative while funding the most important regulatory lifesaving needs. After the Spending Affordability Committee made its recommendations, the Budget Office presented the PAB with the affordability target for our deliberation. The PAB final recommendations for the capital budget and the program are based on four items: one, the assumed availability of $90 million in county funds and general obligation bond affordability of approximately $980 million, currently set at $170 million per annum, with an estimated negative carryover of approximately $39.9 million from the prior fiscal year. The priority of the projects proposed by the requesting agencies; three, consistency with the prior adopted CIP fiscal year 2021 through 2026; and four, the fiscal and policy impact of these projects on the county. The initial program forwarded to the PAB for deliberation was $1,539 million and was over affordability by $469 million in the six-year cycle. Following discussions about the changes in the funding sources, the PAB voted to anonymously approve the final advisory recommendation for fiscal year 2022 through 2027 capital budget and program at its meeting on April 14, 2021 by a vote of seven to zero approval. The final advisory recommendation, 2022 to 2027 capital budget program, by the PAB is $1,566,000 and is under affordability by $14 million. The capital budget for FY2022, recommended by the PAB, valued at $181 million, is under the assumed affordability of $13 million. The PAB wishes to draw your attention to a number of specific projects within the six-year plan that we would like to bring to your attention and make note. One, and no significant order, one is the, we support the Fire Trading Academy replacement. We support the funding for the land for the Fire Trading Academy. Two, Brooklyn Heights Teen Center. The PAB recommends supporting the Brooklyn Heights Teen Center. Three, the West County Swim Center. We support the additional recreational facilities in the West County area. And then four, Mayo Beach Park repairs. The PAB supports the critical infrastructure repairs needed for continued use of current functions at Mayo Beach Park. The infrastructure is to be repaired includes work identified in the renovation study, including playground replacement and ADA compliance. These improvements will be completed prior to the Maryland Route 214 road improvements that are scheduled to be done in 2024. I would also like to bring to your attention, in the future, but it is not in the budget, the 911 call center. This will be a big-ticket item, and once more progress is made on the plans, it will need to be addressed and put in the budget. Enclosed is the FY2021 approved capital budget. The department requests in the PAB final deliberation by project class summary and program affordability comparison. I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kurtz. Ms. Corby, are we going to go through all of the presentations and the next questions? Are we having any questions today?
I would encourage you and members of the council to ask Mr. Kurtz any questions that you may have now.
Thank you. Does any council member have any questions for Mr. Kurtz? Mr. Volkey.
Not so much a question, Madam Chair, but I just want to thank Mr. Kurtz for serving on the board. He's a constituent of mine and also a friend, and he's doing a great job. So I just want to thank him for being here this morning.
Thank you.
Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. I just had one question. The Mayo Beach repairs that you're discussing, the PAB is essentially saying not beyond the infrastructure repairs, right? Those critical infrastructure repairs, you're supporting just those immediate HVAC-type of things.
That's correct. There were other repairs that were requested, and our feeling was because of the construction that's going to be done on the Maryland road nearby, 214, we did not want to create more traffic issues down in that area by having construction going on on the road and at Mayo Beach Park. So the decision was made to do the critical infrastructure stuff and ADA compliance to keep the park up and running.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments or questions from my colleagues? Hearing none. Mr. Kurtz, please give our congratulations to the PAB. You've gotten through not just the budget, but also the GDP. It's been an especially heavy lift year for the PAB, and we thank all of the members of the PAB for their service and dedication to the county.
Thank you.
Have a great day. Our next presentation is from the Spending Affordability Committee.
Madam Chair, we do have members of the budget team here with us who can possibly chime in because we do not have Mr. James in our waiting room yet.
Should we go to the budget overview and come back to the, let's do it that way, then, the budget overview?
Okay, so we need Mr. Chombauer, who is with us here.
Good morning, council.
Good morning.
Chris from our budget officer. I believe the Madam Administrator is going to bring up a presentation that I will go through and buckle in because it's about sixty-five slides, but lots of good information in there for you. And I talk fast, so we'll try and get through it. Ms. Corby, it was up and then it was gone.
I apologize. Just one moment.
Okay, no worries. I wanted to make sure it wasn't anything I did on my end. It's my first year, so I don't want to screw up.
Mr. Chombauer, it's all yours.
Great. Am I able to advance the slides?
You should. You just need to accept that permission.
Okay.
Yes, you have been given control.
Okay, I'll figure it out. But again, let me introduce myself. Chris Chombauer, Budget Officer. It's literally my privilege to be here before you, council. As you know, I spent eight years where you are, so it's fun for me to be on the other side now presenting a budget. This is typically referred to as the Budget Officer Review, but I want to take a second on this page and just highlight my team because the Budget Office is small in number, but very large in talent. And the budget that you have now is the culmination of months and months of work. So Huja Haseem is our Budget Administrator. I think you all are familiar with Huja. Steven Teroux stepped up this year. He's now the Assistant Budget Officer, and he was the lead for our operating budget. Naomi Kerrigan is the lead for the capital budget. And then we have our very talented crew of budget analysts: Darlene Flynn, Beth McCoy, Hannah Dyer, Samantha Chiracchio, and Janay Molden. And I just wanted to take a second to give all of them a shout-out because this is a big unit of work that the office does every year. And I think, speaking for the team, we're proud of the budget before you. So I'm going to see now, Laura, if I can advance this. I don't know if we can, so I'm, it says I'm controlling your screen, but it's not giving me any options to do that, so.
Did you try clicking your mouse or using the down arrows?
Yeah, it's not. Okay, working, okay. So just to reiterate our process on this side, ooh, now I want to back up. Just to reiterate our process on this side, I think you all think of budget season starting May 1st. We think of it starting September. So that's when we begin to put our capital budget together. That continues through the fall to the end of the year. And then our operating budget really begins more at the end of the calendar year into January. That continues through the fall, um, to the end of the year, and then our operating budget really begins um, more at the end of the calendar year into January. Uh, all of that culminates usually on May first with introduction. May Day is a big holiday around the Budget Office. Uh, this year we're celebrating May Day a day early because of the calendar, so here we are on April thirtieth. Um, but just wanted to give you a, a look at the timeline. Um, we're going to go through first the estimated results from the current budget year twenty-one because the beginning is a good place to start. What you see here is our approved and um, revised estimates for fiscal year twenty-one. And I won't tick through all of these numbers, but I do want to call a few things to your attention. You will of course remember last year, uh, because of the pandemic and the economic impacts that were forecast to go along with that. We revised um, significantly down many of our revenue estimates. Um, what we have found uh, a year later is that some or most of those uh, negative impacts did not materialize on the major. Funding sources for the county. So property tax revenue is pretty insulated and that came in very much as expected. You see the delta there is only a million four. But our income tax, uh, we had, had written down significantly, but what we found is that because of the federal assistance. Uh, bills that passed through uh, Congress, um, we actually generated about forty-one million dollars more than what our um, revised es- or what our F Y twenty-one uh, budget estimate was. So that's very good news. Um, similarly, recordation and transfer tax revenue is what we get from real estate sales and, and. The real estate market has been very hot of late. We have a couple of slides that will discuss that in detail later in the presentation, but that came in twenty-five million dollars more. Um, than what F Y twenty-one budget uh, anticipated. So those were the two big positive impacts. And then most of the other revenue sources were down moderately even from our estimate. So at the end of the day. We came out on the plus side of about forty-eight million, forty-seven point nine on the operating uh, side. And then we had also um, estimated in, in twenty-one budget that we would be utilizing thirty-seven point seven uh, fund balance. And instead, we actually generated three million in fund balance, so that's more good news for the county. But if you sum it all up there, uh, the net. Down at the bottom right corner is about seven point one million dollars. Okay, so this is just to walk through the revenue and expenditures at a high level. Our approved budget was one um, billion with a B, six, eight, one and a half million. And then our projected realizations were one billion, seven hundred twenty-nine point four million, so there's that forty-seven point nine more than anticipated. Now on the expenditure side in the approved budget, we had seventeen uh, or one billion, seven hundred nineteen point two. And the projected expenditures were one billion, seven hundred twenty-six million point four. So that is seven point one million over expenditure, so you subtract that out of our fund balance and that's where you have the three point one million at the bottom. Here's a little bit more detail on our fund balance. Uh, we carried over from the end of uh, fiscal year uh, twenty-one. We're projecting uh, one hundred and eleven million. Uh, remember in twenty-one, we had designated that thirty-seven point seven number. Um, so that would give us seventy-three point four million available um, at the beginning of the upcoming fiscal year. So the twenty-one underutilization of fund balance is forty point eight million, so we have a grand total. Fund balance, uh, very healthy amount here for uh, available in F Y twenty-two, one hundred fourteen point two million dollars. That's good news for the county. I want to take a second and give you an update on the federal COVID funds, so you all are very familiar with the CARES Act. We got about a hundred and one million dollars from the U S Treasury back in April of last year. Uh, they extended the uh, spending deadline for that. But to the end of this calendar year, uh, our latest um, report, which is the end of March. Shows that our expenditures to date of those funds is about ninety-two million dollars. So we still have. Uh, somewhere in the neighborhood of eight or nine million dollars uh, left and we uh, anticipate spending that on current programs and spending that down by the end of the deadline. In addition, earlier this year, of course, um, Congress passed the American Rescue Plan Act, which we colloquially refer to as ARPA. Um, and the county is scheduled to get a hundred and twelve million dollars uh, in direct appropriation in two equal installments. The first of those. Is due on or about uh, May twelfth of this year, and then we'll get the second installment uh, twelve months after that. So what you will see in this budget is we've got about eighteen million dollars deployed. Uh, specifically as uh, grant funds in uh, in a handful of things, but we wanted to be careful um, to save the vast majority of that funds uh, to be more strategic. We don't have a deadline to spend that until the end of calendar year twenty-four, so we will be working with um, the administration and the council. Uh, for a, a strategy on those ARPA funds. We're, we're in no rush to fund them and we want to be strategic and careful uh, with that ARPA money. Okay, so now for what we've been waiting for, the general fund overview for fiscal year twenty-two budget. Here's the big number, this is one billion, eight hundred seventy-six million, five hundred and eighteen thousand. That is your grand total. Of operating funds and then down at the bottom, you will see uh, a slight caveat that a hundred and fourteen point two million of that, which we discussed on the previous slide. Um, that is fund balance. Uh, so this, this number is a little bit larger um, than you might typically think because we have a larger fund balance than the county traditionally has. Here's a little bit about the growth. Uh, if you take out the twenty-one budget from what we proposed in twenty-two, you see that's an increase of one hundred fifty-seven point three million dollars. That in and of itself is a nine point one percent year-over-year increase, but sixty-seven and a half million of that is incremental fund balance. So if you take that away, then that gives us an eighty point eight million dollar year-over-year increase in recurring revenue. So that is a four point eight percent increase. Here are some highlights for the budget. I'll tick through these really quickly. Um, I'm sure you guys will have uh, more questions as we go through the process, but these are some of the things uh, we wanted to bring to your attention initially. Um, there's that eighty point eight million increase in recurring revenue. Uh, we were able to lower the property tax rate uh, very nominally from nine, three, four to nine, three, three. That is in accordance with our property tax revenue cap. Um, and you see the amounts for Annapolis and Highland Beach there as well, since they each have a tax differential. The income, local income tax rate remains unchanged, uh, that's still two point eight one percent. The uh, administration is funding the Board of Education. At a incremental recurring amount of thirty-four point five million dollars, so that is eighteen point seven million. Above the newest uh, projection for maintenance of effort. I'll let you all know that that M O E number was a little bouncy this year because first. Uh, we thought it would be a negative number based on the enrollment um, decline. And then uh, we were informed that the uh, the new calculation would be about five point eight million dollars. But then after our friends in the General Assembly uh, passed the uh, Blueprint Cleanup Bill. Uh, our friends at the Department of Legislative Services gave us. A brand-new, fresh maintenance of effort level that was much higher than what we were expecting, but nevertheless. Um, the county executive is funding uh, above all of those levels and it is now eighteen point seven above the current M O E um, amount. So this budget funds thirty-three new general fund positions in county government. Uh, we also fund eleven million dollars eh, into the rainy day fund, which is about halfway. To the new ceiling of six percent and thank you all uh, for not only sponsoring, but for voting for. Um, the bill that raises our cap now to six percent. Uh, so we project, uh, if this budget passes, um, and that contribution remains. We will have a projected rainy day fund balance of about ninety-five point seven million dollars um, at the end of F Y twenty-two. We're also fully funding our O P, O P E B um, plan, that's the uh, other post-employment benefits, uh, mostly retiree healthcare. And we're also doing a twenty million dollar one-time payment, so this is a deployment of our fund balance. But this would be like paying down the principal of your mortgage, um, so the annual amount is, is what you would pay on your mortgage normally. And this twenty million dollars is kind of an extra payment towards principal. So what that will do is. Reduce our overall liability by twenty million and uh, potentially give us some savings in future years on what our required annual contribution will need to be. Um, we're also taking the step that's been uh, advised for some time now in lowering our pension discount rate. So this is essentially the assumption that our investments will return. Uh, we had a pretty high rate of seven point four five and now we're reducing that by forty-five basis points. This results in a larger annual contribution, but it really shores up our pension fund and will um. Hedge against the economy uh, downturning or the returns not doing as well um, as we had hoped, and so it gives more security to our employees and retirees. That um, are going to depend on their pensions uh, when their county service is done, so the county executive is very excited about that. We're also pleased that there will be uh, no change in the water sewer use rates. There will also be no change in the stormwater remediation fee or the W P R F fee as it's known. Um, but our rate model is showing that it's finally time that we have to increase the solid waste fee, so this is the trash and recycling pickup fee. So that is moving from two hundred ninety-eight dollars a year where it's been since twenty thirteen uh, up to three forty-one uh, per year. Now a little bit into the revenue detail. Um, there's that number, one point eight uh, billion dollars and this is how it breaks down. I won't go through this except just to remind you that our two largest sources of income are property tax, which is about forty-two. Point one percent and the local income tax, which is thirty-four and a half percent. The next biggest one is recordation and transfer tax and everything else is pretty low uh, single digits there. So here's the numbers uh, behind the pie charts, uh, so you can just see how that all breaks out. Um, again, at the very bottom, you see our uh, fund balance is added in there, which gives us our final number. Um, but this is that nine point two percent change um, according to what was approved in twenty-one. And then it reduces slightly if you factor in our revisions um, to twenty-one revenue over the last year. Okay, this is just to remind the council where we compare next door neighbors. Um, one small caveat that we are comparing our twenty-two proposed rate to um, the F Y twenty-one. Um, approved rates across the county, but we don't expect those to change very much. So for property tax, uh, county residents enjoy the seventh lowest rate in the state of Maryland. Um, here's a little bit more detail of uh, what happened in twenty-one. We had better-than-expected new construction and then um, we have to make adjustments based on abatements and reductions. Uh, and Huja Haseem does that, and it turns out that this year we had to do less of that than usual, so that helps explain why our property tax revenue came in. A little stronger um, than we were expecting, but pretty much it was on the mark. I think we were only off by about uh, a little over a million bucks. In F Y twenty-two, uh, we are expecting the accessible base to go up a little over two percent. Um, our C P I in January, uh, what we base our um, tax revenue cap on is one point four percent. And the proposed property tax rate, as we said before, does tick down slightly. The overall rate is nine, three, three, and you'll see a commensurate uh, small decrease in both Annapolis and Highland Beach rates. Um, so then the total amount of revenue from property tax is seven hundred eighty-nine point eight million dollars. That's two point two percent up from the original twenty-one and one point eight percent up from our revised uh, revenue. Okay, oops, we're not sliding. Here we go. Um, okay, here is just the chart and you'll notice that these converge at the right of the screen because it is um, constant dollars versus actual dollars. So this shows you just the pretty slow um, steady increase, uh, linear increase almost in the property tax revenue, which goes up with assessments. There is a little bit of a bump in twenty because that is the year that the county executive uh, went above the tax revenue cap rate uh, to have an additional contribution to the Board of Education. Uh, here's just a little bit more detail of the components, so the blue is C P I. The uh, I'm sorry, the green is C P I, the blue is the taxable assessment growth, and then red is the tax rate change. So you can see this goes up and down uh, depending on assessments and C P I. Uh, again, the one uh, moderate outlier is in twenty when there was a three percent, three point eight percent increase um, above the tax. Uh, revenue cap rate uh, in F Y twenty. Hey, I like this graph because it shows you how the county is insulated um, from a um, uh, another recession or a decline in property assessments. Because of our homestead tax credit, most of our properties are not assessed at their true value. So if the value was to fall, um, we still are protected from our revenue. Because most properties are not paying the true assessment and we have among the lowest uh, homestead credits at two percent. Across the state, so that is definitely a value for the county and a good thing for county taxpayers as well. Now we'll move on to income tax. Uh, you can see again, this just shows where we are in relation to our neighbors and uh, same caveat, this is showing the F Y twenty-two proposed rate for us. Which is unchanged to the F Y twenty-one approved rates across the state of Maryland, but you can see. That uh, county taxpayers enjoy the fourth lowest in the state. Similar to what we did on property tax, I'll just run through some factors uh, that, that we noted on the income tax revenue. Uh, forty-one million dollars above where we projected, and this is just simply because. Much of the downturn that we expected due to the COVID economy on a macro scale did not happen. And that is largely due to the influx of cash that the federal assistance bills put back into the economy, so that is good news. It is important to note that that doesn't mean that there weren't folks that were suffering. Um, there certainly were and they tended to be at the lower end of the income scale, and that's why the county concentrated its assistance efforts uh, through our CARES programs. Um, with, with that population. In twenty-two, uh, we're going to go with a three percent uh, growth assumption in calendar year twenty-one. We're going to increase that by two percent in calendar year twenty-two and then increase in three percent in calendar year twenty-three. Um, the team has spent a lot of time looking at those numbers and uh, also discussing uh, with what the state is doing. So we're very comfortable and confident in those and believe those are pretty conservative uh, projections. Um, we do want to note that there's the positive ongoing in, impact from the recent federal tax law change of a year or two ago. Uh, that's about sixteen and a half million dollars and um, also because the tax rates were changed in fiscal year twenty. Uh, and there is a lag effect. This is the third and final year that we expect an incremental increase from that change. So as you can see in this bullet point, that's about seven point three million dollars and it will be uh, static ongoing from here. Uh, and then you might remember the win case, uh, we had reserved uh, multiple millions of dollars uh, for that liability. But we have decided this year to unreserve the win funds and use that as just annual fund balance. So all that's to say that the bottom line for income tax revenue is six hundred forty-seven point four million dollars. That is almost a ten percent increase from our original um, projection in F Y twenty-one. And it's almost three percent from our uh, latest revised uh, projection, so that is very good news for the county. Here's the same kind of chart showing in today's dollars versus when it was, and again, you can see a pretty. Um, steady, almost linear relationship with a, a little bump in F Y twenty when the county executive uh, and the council did pass um, those adjusted tax rates. Okay, here's a slide on our P P I fund, that's public, uh, permanent public improvements. Pleased to say that this budget does fully utilize, utilize the uh, P P I bonds uh, in the capital budget in the six-year C I P. So this is two hundred fifty million dollars that you will see um, in a number of, I think, uh, very good infrastructure projects. And um, this is funded by that one tenth of a percent of the income tax. Uh, and the provision is that it shall not exceed twenty-one million dollars annually. Recordation and transfer tax, um, the housing market was just really on fire over the last year, so transactions and prices are both up. Mortgage rates were at historic lows and our year-to-date figures show about ten percent or more growth. That's pretty extraordinary, but we are just putting the caution on that there, um, the inventory is low. And we are expecting eventually that this cannot be sustained and will start to moderate, and that's why you'll see um, that our. Uh, projection in twenty-two uh, does decline slightly, so um, all things uh, totaled up, we're projecting one minute, one. Hundred and five million dollars in R and T tax. That is, I think, a pretty consistent. Tax. That is, I think, a pretty conservative estimate with some room for upside. But we don't wanna find ourselves where the county was um about ten years ago. When recordation and transfer tax, the bottom fell out of it and the county was in big trouble, so we're playing that cautiously. But that is about a ten and a half percent increase from the twenty one original, but then you'll see it's a twelve point five decrease. From F Y twenty one revised um when we adjusted our numbers. Okay, here's a graph of the recordation and transfer tax revenue and what you'll notice is the big shark fin there on the left. That is the housing uh crash. And um we don't wanna see that again, so we've crept up almost to where we were at the peak of the housing bubble in two thousand five, two thousand six. And you see that the number does tick down at the right of the graph. We are forecasting a a moderate decline there. Uh, it would be great if that doesn't materialize, but we think that the current levels can't quite be sustained. So we're playing it safe in um recordation and transfer tax for twenty two. Here's some graphs that just support uh how the market is doing. Again, you see the falloff back about ten years ago and then the slow steady increase. Where the orange unit or the orange line is unit sold, that's actually actually back up above where we were in the housing bubble. Um, and the average price has also exceeded where we were back in two thousand seven and two thousand eight. Here's your mortgage interest rates. Um, if you're like me, you took advantage of them and refinanced your house recently, but you can see they were down below three, have recently ticked back up. But they they're still historically low, um and so there still is a lot of activity in Anaronda County and all across Maryland and the nation. Okay, state shared revenue, this is a um, this is a complicated one that comes from a bunch of different sources, but we'll hit a couple of the highlights. Heiser highway user revenue comes from the state. Um, we projected that at six million, but it all fell away um and we raised it down by point seven million. Table games are an interesting one. Uh, they were, the casinos were closed for a while. But when they opened back up, they really rebounded, so our revised estimates are actually up two million dollars there. And admissions and amusement tax, as you would expect, um fell about a quarter. Um, from the original budget due to so many things being closed uh during the COVID shutdowns. In twenty two, we expect uh those to recover, so we're projecting highway user at about six point four million. Uh, table game revenue, we're going up by forty four percent, eight point six million. And we're doing about a seven percent increase for A and A tax, that's at five point eight million. So you total it all up at the end. In F Y twenty two, uh we're projecting state shared at twenty one point two million dollars. That's about a fourteen or fifteen percent increase compared to original or revised twenty one numbers. So looking healthy and we hope it comes in that way. Here's just a a graph that shows you um how the state shared revenue has been in the past. You see that there was a pretty big decline in two thousand and nine as things shifted around. And then uh twenty thirteen was a little bit of anomaly as the V L T was restructured. But then uh there's been a little bit of up and down, but pretty much steady increase over time uh since that point. Local sales tax, this comes from hotel motel tax receipts and um parking revenue from B W I and other sources. So there was big shortfalls uh in these for obvious reasons due to the pandemic. We're expecting recovery in twenty two, so uh still slightly uh less than maybe a normal level. Uh, but we are projecting recoveries here, so uh twenty seven point two million is our number for F Y twenty two. That's uh a little less than what our twenty one um original estimate is, but actually thirty five percent more. Than uh how we revised it. This just shows you what happened to those funds. They just took a dive uh when the COVID pandemic hit. So we are projecting uh a recovery um going into this year, which is good. Uh, this is an interesting graph. It shows license and permits as and as you'll see, uh there hasn't been a. A dramatic falloff uh because of the pandemic. But nineteen into twenty, there was a drop off and then we've actually seen a pretty slow and steady increase. Um, but nothing that's that's unusual compared to other uh trends from previous years. So this is. This was at least interesting for me to see. I would have expected perhaps a bigger um impact there, but that's good news uh for the county. On our investment income, um this just, this just reflects uh how our investments are doing. Uh, not a lot of action here, basically remaining flat about one point four million dollars. Um, so that's unchanged from our twenty one revised. Um, and it's actually down from what the F Y twenty one original amount was. Okay, inter-fund reimbursement, this is just where different aspects of uh funding sources kind of repay the pay each other. Uh, it's it's an accounting maneuver where funds move around between funds. Um, so when you total it all down at the end, it's about eighty million dollars, but the big movers here are the county's enterprise funds. And the T I Fs, the tax increment funds. Nothing unusual here. Uh, seventy nine point nine million is the bottom line on that money moving around. This is a good one, uh and again, a happy story and I'm I'm uh grateful for the council and the role they played introducing. The bill to go up to six percent cap of our um operating fund. So as you will see, the blue line is the um the fund balance that we have. And the orange is represents the the amount of the cap going back to twenty seventeen. Uh, when it was changed to be five percent of the operating revenue. And we've made steady progress uh throughout that time. And as you'll see in twenty one, the blue line meets the orange line, which is great. We are maxed out at the moment. And we have a new cap of six percent, which is why the orange bar uh jumps so sharply. And with our eleven million dollar proposed contribution this year, we're looking to get about halfway to that new cap, which I think is great news. Um, for the county um fiscal situation. Here is a summary table. The text might be a little small for you, but this is the tax uh rates and fee changes in the proposed budget. Um, you'll see that on the big ones in the general fund, very little movement. Um, on the property tax, we're talking about a uh a fraction of a percent change and it's all negative. Uh, which is good. And income tax remains unchanged as we mentioned. There's your watershed fee, that's also zero. Um, if you skip down, you'll also see water and wastewater operating fund, uh both water and sewer are zero. But then, as we mentioned uh earlier in the presentation, we are um proposing an increase for the first time since. Uh, twenty, I'm sorry, uh two thousand thirteen, a increase in our trash and recycling um collection fee. And the tipping fee. So that's about a fourteen percent increase and a thirteen percent increase uh respectively. And then uh at the very bottom, these are the utility debt service funds and you'll remember that we're on kind of a three-year plan. To get those back up to where uh they were um prior to the cut from the previous administration, so there's about a ten percent increase in those. This is the third year of that multiple year plan uh to get back to the previous rates. Okay, we'll go into a little expenditure detail here. Um, here's your pie chart for appropriations. Uh, you guys have seen this uh two years before, so no surprises here. Uh, the the biggest thing, the biggest slice of the pie is our friends at the school system. Um, so this shows you how much they're getting. The next biggest is public safety and then general government. And then the slices get smaller from there. Here it is broken out into the actual numbers and I'll note that this board of ed number is not the fully loaded. Where we also include the debt service, the school safety and school health officers. Um, this is the straight um direct contribution to the board of ed. Uh, and then you can go down to see our component units, community college, library and judicial. And then the other components of county government, land use, human services, public safety. And then the one fifty eight million for debt service. So that all sums up to that same number that you're used to seeing by now, one point eight seven six million dollars. Okay, there, as I mentioned, there are thirty three new positions in our general fund this year. Um, a lot of those are coming in central services. There's six in central services. That's largely to have more buyers to help streamline and expedite our procurement system, which if. You guys are familiar with that, uh probably feel the same way that we do, that we wanna give them some more resources to speed that up a bit. And then the other big player here is our police department. Uh, Chief Awad uh wants to make some changes and um bring some additional positions in. And we're also uh adding to our crisis response teams there. And then a a couple other um positions sprinkled throughout county government. Uh, you heard in the county executive speech, he talked about the new stormwater strike team. That's the three positions and inspections and permits. And uh I'll also mention that uh Sheriff Fredericks, uh we have two positions, uh two additional deputies uh going to his budget as well. Okay, so the F Y twenty two pay packages, uh we did reach tentative agreements with all seven bargaining units, which we were very excited about. Unfortunately, uh one unit to date has not ratified the agreement, so we're preparing. That we may have to go to arbitration with them, which is unfortunate. But we'll talk in more detail when our personnel is before you uh on that issue. And then um we have, all of our agreements are very equitable this year. They're pretty consistent across bargaining units. And that is about a one point five percent cost of living adjustment, and that's very consistent with the one point four percent C P I. Uh, that we spoke about earlier. And then uh a merit or a step increase for all county employees, and that also includes. Our friends that are in the non-represented units. Um, you'll remember that last year we were unable to give them a step. And they only had a one point five uh uh fifteen hundred dollar one-time pay. So we're very pleased uh that we're getting them back on track uh with a step and a cola as well. So I wanna take a moment to acknowledge the sacrifice that our non-reps made last year. And then if you total that all up, it's an incremental cost across bargaining units this year of twelve point uh two million. Okay, debt service, this is the money we pay on our bonds that help us build all the glorious things that we depend on. Um, that's about sixty million dollars for general county. Um, the compass point uh golf course is one point seven, that's in its separate fund. Um, we are moving that over to finance non-departmental this year, incidentally. And then community college debt service is eight point eight. And then uh the big hitter here is board of ed, that's about eighty eight million dollars going for school construction projects. So total that all up. One hundred fifty eight point four million dollars in debt service payments for F Y twenty two. Here is a uh chart over time to illustrate where that funding's going. And um what you'll notice is that one of these things uh is growing uh faster than others, and that is the dark bar. That is board of ed. So um since about F Y, uh I would say eleven or twelve. Uh, we've kind of had an increased level of effort for um going uh through our school construction backlog. And you can see that that means that more of our percentage of debt service uh payments is going to the school product. Uh, construction products. This is a fun graph that just shows where we are in relation to our neighbors in terms of the um percentage of accessible base. So we're kind of among the the lower ones here. Um, one point one to two percent in Anorondal, uh especially comparing to our peers in central Maryland. Uh, that's lower than our neighboring counties like Prince George's Howard and Baltimore. So this is a map that we're proud of and we wanna keep it that way. Here is just over time, the percentage um ratio for debt service to operating revenue. Uh, we generally try and keep this around nine percent. What you'll notice is F Y twenty two is nine point six percent. But that is making an assumption that we utilize all of our bond authority. Generally, uh we don't do that and we revise the number down. So what you'll see is F Y twenty one is eight point nine percent. That's the true number. Where last year, I believe that was closer to nine and a half percent at this point. So uh F Y twenty two may look like an outlier, but. Um, we expect that that number will come down um by this time next year. But um you'll see in the text below that it's about one point seven six billion total. And so the one percent on that ratio is um about seventeen point six million. Okay, here's a quick slide on O P A. This is again the retiree healthcare. Uh, we are making that big twenty million dollar one-time prepayment. Uh, which we're excited about and we're fully funding our recommended general fund recurring total as well as the other units. Um, there's also a one-time county transfer from the health insurance fund. So that gives us a bottom line for total O P A contribution of ninety one point eight million dollars. Uh, or yes, ninety one point eight million dollars, which is really good news for that fund. Um, which is a re- relatively recent fund and we have a strategy for ninety percent funding over twenty years. Which will put us in really good shape. Um, and that is something I think we should all be proud of. Uh, incidentally, that fund was established when I was on the council, so I'm personally pleased to see it where it is today. Let's talk a little bit about our component units. Um, these are units that we uh aren't completely under the county umbrella. But that we give a lot of money to and certainly have a lot of interaction with. Um, we'll start with our friends at the board of ed. So the direct funding is seven hundred eighty four million bucks. And then uh we bring in other uh county funding that is associated with the board of ed, but isn't a direct appropriation. So this is the debt service we spoke about. Also, our school health program is fifteen point seven million. And school safety, which is the school resource officers and crossing guards, that's another eight point four million. So the quote-unquote fully loaded school budget is eight hundred ninety six million bucks. And that, my friends, is more than half pers- uh half of our entire uh county operating budget, about fifty. Point eight percent. So big chunk of change there. Um, here's how it breaks down from other uh funding sources. So the county funds sixty four point five percent of the board of ed funding. The state kicks in about a third. There's a very tiny bit of uh federal assistance there. And then they have about a two percent fund balance. So that is one point two billion total for the board of ed. That is a year-over-year increase. Um, for the county of thirty four point five million. And as you can see, the increase this year, the recurring increase is almost entirely by the county. Because we did not get hardly any um state unrestricted funding due to the enrollment decline. Okay, here's a couple highlights on our board event funding. Uh, the county executive is very pleased that the budget is able to fully fund the compensation placeholder for F Y twenty two. For our all units, that's fifteen point two million dollars to give all units a step. And it's another seven and a half million for one percent cola. Uh, there's also about eight million dollars in the budget to um invest in the catch-up steps. Or backup steps for all units in board of ed. These are steps that were not um uh given when uh the economy was not doing well uh several years back. So the county executive has expressed an interest in getting those steps back. Um, and what we're doing is eight million dollars this year, which essentially will be one full back step for all units uh in twenty two. And then another full mid-year step, which means half of the funding comes in twenty two. And the other half, which is about three point two million, will then uh follow in twenty three. Um, there's also fifty three new positions and you can see them listed there. But uh we were not able to to fund all of the classroom teacher requests um that the board put before us this year. Uh, we were able to prioritize the behavioral health and special education and then also um. To fulfill the request for the new grade at Crofton High School. Um, so that makes up the majority of the twenty six uh or the fifty three new positions. Okay, good news for our friends at the community college. Uh, they had a request. Um, incremental request, a total of about four million dollars uh this year. And uh the state is gonna be able to make up about two point six million of that because they undid their proposed reduction. And then we're gonna pick up the rest, so their um incremental requests will be fully funded. But as you see uh in the quote-unquote three-legged stool of funding the community college. The county's leg is a little bit larger than the other two. Uh, we pick up about forty percent of that and we're we're proud to do it. Um, that's forty eight point one million dollars of county funding to the community college, which as the county executive noted. Was recently um awarded and celebrated as the number one community college in all the land. So we're excited for um uh Dr. Lindsay and her colleagues over there. Um, our library funds, uh they get a total amount about twenty nine million dollars. And eighty seven percent of that comes from the county. And again, uh we're very pleased and proud to do that and uh very pleased with um what our library system is doing. But that's twenty five point six million dollars um to the library system. Okay, so here's here's where it all comes down to the operating summary. We have a balanced budget. It's one point seven million of recurring, add in another hundred and fourteen of fund balance. That gets us to the number that you're used to seeing by now, one point eight seven six billion. That gives our balance of zero, which means you have before you a balanced budget. Um, here's how we're utilizing the one-time revenue. Um, we have that hundred and fourteen of fund balance, so we're putting sixty five million of that. We have that hundred and fourteen of fund balance, so we're putting sixty-five million of that into our capital budget, which is really exciting news because last year we've had to pull a lot of the cash out of the capital budget. So in a typical year, we may have thirty or forty million of PEGO in capital. This year, we're making up for lost time last year, and we're able to kind of give the capital budget a boost with sixty-five. We're using twenty million of that for that one-time OPEB contribution. And then about eleven and a half million dollar of operating expansion expenses that we classify as one-time expenses. So these are things like equipment or maybe programs that have a one-year timeline only. So these are not recurring programs or expenses. We're actually gaining thirteen point two million from a transfer from the self-insurance fund. And then there's that eleven million dollar contribution to the rainy day fund that I know you all are as excited as I am about. So that's a total of ninety-four point three, which leaves us a structural deficit a little less than twenty million. And that is bringing it down from what the FY twenty-one approved amount was, which was twenty-four point seven. And the administration is comfortable continuing to decrease the structural deficit. We have a multiple-year plan to get back down to zero. But especially with the ARPA funding out there and having a timeline for that that goes through calendar year twenty-four, we think it's an appropriate strategy to have a multiple-year plan to get back to zero on the structural deficit. Here's how the structural deficit looks over time. We're still nowhere near where we were back in twenty-ten when there was a forty-two and a half million dollar structural deficit. And you'll see, last year, we did open up one, and then we are making our way to try and reduce that back. So capital budget for a sec. We have a triple-A rating for standard and poor, a long-time triple-A rating. We also have a long-time triple-A rate, or sorry, double-A one rating for Moody's. We think that some of the moves in this budget will make it likely that Moody's will consider us for triple-E, so we're excited about that. Here is our debt affordability model, and of course you'll find this in the budget book as well. But you can see that the the top left, you'll see where we're paying down the the almost forty million dollars of future funding that was used in the FY twenty-one. But the good news is, and the county executive mentioned in his remark, the FY twenty-two CIP does not utilize future year funding. We're actually thirteen or fourteen million under affordability for the first time in five years. So I think that's very good news. But you'll see here that we're well within all of our affordability ratios and guidelines. And this shows a modest growth or increase over time, but we stay well within our guidelines and ratios. So we're pleased to present this model to you. Here's how the bonds and PEGO shakeout. You'll see basically a hundred and seventy million dollars of new authority every year. And the use of bonds is on the fourth line down there, a hundred and sixteen million dollars this year. And then it goes up or down depending on what we're utilizing in that year's CIP going forward. In the fund balance this year, sixty-five million is a big number, and we're very excited about that. We do plug in a pretty conservative five million dollar number in the out years. But when when things go well, we're we're pleased to boost that up. So it's five million dollars, but we hope that that increases by the time that we get to twenty-three. And then you can see at the very bottom, our cumulative amount over or under affordability. There is a little bit of what we call lumpiness this year, but it's much less than traditional. So we're attempting to smooth out the budget over time, which I think is good. But the administration worked hard to get here, and you'll see we're thirteen point six under this year. A lot of big projects hit in twenty-three, so we're a little over in twenty-three and twenty-four. And then we smoothed back out in twenty-five and twenty-six. And then as is traditional, for the sixth year, we're under affordability there. But that all balances out to a cumulative under affordability number of just over fifteen million dollars. So here's the breakout of where the PPI bonds are going, and this is a collection of great projects. A lot of school construction here, and then the public safety ones, and also some road projects and transit projects. So the three I want to take a moment to highlight is our Route Two and Route Three improvements. As the county executive mentioned in his budget address, there's been a lot of progress working with the state to make these much-needed corridor improvements a reality. And they are fully funded from the county side with PPI funds. And then also the parole transportation center is also a big landing spot from our transportation dollars of the PPI. The other road and transportation projects you see are either adding capacity or addressing critical safety needs. And most of these, there's a cost share with impact fees or other county general bonds as well. But this list is available to you all if you want it, and you can see at the very bottom right, it totals to two hundred fifty million dollars. So that is showing that the PPI fund is fully deployed in the CIP. Here's how the capital budget breaks down in a cool three-D pie chart. Again, Board of Ed, direct appropriation is about forty-three percent. Roads and bridges is the next largest one, as you would expect, and then a general county is thirteen percent. I will note, Raccoon Parks, we're very excited that their slice of the pie ticked up a bit this year. We're doing a lot of great Raccoon Parks projects, and that was brought to you in part by our friends in the state who included a nine million dollar boost in their capital budget to the county to contribute to a lot of the good Raccoon Parks projects that Jessica Lays and her team brought forward to us this year. And we did take an eye towards equity and geography to make sure that there are good projects throughout the county on the Raccoon Parks. Here's how the capital budget breaks down by class. Again, this just shows you some of the same data that you saw in the pie chart, but built out with actual numbers. And and the total for the entire CIP is one point eight billion dollars there. Talk a little bit about our enterprise funds. These are funds that are paid for by the fees that they generate themselves, and so they operate a little bit within their own fence. The utility fund has total revenues of a hundred and five point six million dollars. Our solid waste fund is sixty-five point three million dollars of revenue. And you can see on the expenditure side, a little bit more expenditures than revenue on utility fund, which is okay. We've got a fund balance there, and then we're pretty equal on the solid waste fund. But going forward, you'll remember, and you'll see with the rate model, that we do anticipate that we need to make that fee adjustment in order to secure the rate model going forward. In closing, because I think you guys have heard enough from your friendly budget officer for now, you can find the completed budget documents live, online, on the county budget website. That's aacounty.org/budget, that's aacounty.org/budget, where you will find the budget book and operating budget, and then also the capital budget broken out by class. And you'll also find the text and video of the county executive's budget address, as well as a budget in brief document, which is a subset of the presentation I've just presented to you, and a handy four-page budget highlight summary that the county executive's office produced. All of this is available live on the budget website. And that concludes my presentation, and I am happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Trumpbauer. And Madam Chair has the first question, which is, how is it to be on the other side as budget officer giving this presentation?
It's actually very interesting, Madam Chair, thank you for the question. I've always loved budget, and I've never been able to dive in with with both hands and work on all the nuts and bolts. And I I started doing that this year, but let me take another moment to thank the team. You all have, and and the county in general has an amazing budget team with a lot of talent. And I hope that you're all proud of the work that was put into this budget. And I know I speak for them when I say they look forward to working with you and the auditor staff to make it even better during the next forty-five days.
Thank you. Questions from colleagues, I see Ms. Hare has her flag, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Jessica Hare, District Seven. Obviously, we'll all dive into the details a little bit more in the coming weeks. But from kind of a broad-scale view of the budget, I was looking at your presentation compared with the spending affordability committee's recommendation letter that we got. And I know that they may give us some updated information when they present in a minute. But the one point eight seven six billion, if I back out the hundred and fourteen million dollars of one-time funding, of fund balance that you're discussing, I get a one point seven six two billion dollars roughly of, you know, recurring revenue. That is still forty-eight million dollars over what the spending affordability committee is recommending our budget be for this year. And so I'm just trying to understand how you reconcile that.
Sure, that's not unusual to have our number be a little off from spending affordability. And of course, theirs is an advisory amount. But I will also note that when when they do their work, it's primarily towards the beginning of the year in January. And we we are looking now at a much different economic forecast than we had back then. And we, our team had the luxury of revising our revenue estimates into March. And so that is after the federal assistance bill passed, and also after some of the the state economic forecasts were adjusted as well. So I actually don't think that the delta that you described, council member, is is a very large one to begin with. But considering that the economic forecasts have become a little bit rosier in the last four or five months, I think that that gives us even more comfort in the assumptions that we have built into our entire budget.
May I ask one follow-up, Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Trumpbauer, it looks from your presentation, though, that you're still projecting growth in excess of personal income growth, is that true? You're projecting growth in the budget in excess of personal income growth.
So we project, I believe it's a three percent personal income growth, and that, that, and then next year, I think it's two percent, and then maybe three percent in the in the following year. So that is, in our view, a pretty conservative estimate, and it's very much in line with what we understand other counties in the state are projecting as well.
No, no, I'm sorry, so Jessica Hare, District Seven, so your budget growth is four point six percent, I believe it was, if you do not include the one-time spending, and that four point six is a bit higher than the projected income growth of three percent this year.
That's correct, but that's 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 not the only thing that drives, you know, obviously, all the all the revenues, but.
Understand, thank you so much.
Sure.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Amanda Fiedler, District Five. This is more of a policy decision question, looking at that last, one of the last slides on the structural deficit. I, why are we, why was the decision made to not take a bigger stab at that, at lowering that? Because it's a multi-year plan, you said, but I didn't see, to me, it didn't look like a significant, as significant as I would have liked to have seen, difference.
So I'll answer on on behalf of the county executive, that he felt strongly that the things that we that we funded in this budget needed to be funded. So I think part of your answer is the amount of money that we did over the maintenance of effort for our school system. That was something the county executive felt strongly about. So so this budget dedicates revenue to that. But any any recurring revenue that's deployed in this budget could have been used to offset the structural deficit. But I think that the administration feels secure that it's it's funding the priorities that that the county needs right now.
Anyone else? I'm stunned by the silence. Okay, well, thank you very much, Mr. Trumpbauer, and please also give our thanks and appreciation to the entire budget team for their excellent work, and as always, the budget presentations, I'm sure, are going to be very thoughtful, thorough and compelling, so, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, we'll be seeing a lot of each other in the next forty-five days, so I look forward to working with each and every one of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Corby, you say we do have someone from the spending affordability committee?
I have received an email that Mr. James is setting up and logging in.
Okay.
So I'm keeping an eye open for him to join here. How how would you feel about taking a five-minute break? Do you want to do that, or do you want to just wait patiently?
Madam Secretary, if he is logging in right now, I'd rather just give him a couple of minutes, and then hopefully we can wrap up.
Okay. Madam Chair, the message I got was received at twelve forty-three, so it was about, you know, just a few minutes ago here. I have resent the invitation to Mr. James as well to hopefully get it front and center in his inbox.
Madam Secretary, at a certain point, should we consider trying to reschedule the presentation from the spending affordability committee?
We can certainly do that, I I believe everyone received the report from the spending affordability committee. So we could also give you a chance to take a look at that, and maybe we could handle questions on an individual basis as well. So those are, I think those are both doable ideas. But I will leave it up to you and the rest of the council to decide how you'd like to proceed there.
Well, we don't need any kind of motion to move, or maybe we do, do we need a motion to move that presentation to a later meeting? If we don't need a motion, then that would be my preference, it doesn't look like he's joining, so.
I don't believe that takes a a motion, Madam Chair, I think that we can just go ahead and plan on doing that.
Anybody opposed? Speak up.
I just missed.
Okay, so with that, we will intend to reschedule the presentation from the spending affordability committee for another one of our hearing days. Is there any other business to be brought before the county council at this time? Seeing none. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Allison Figur.
Rodbean second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. The county council is adjourned until six PM on Monday, May third, twenty-twenty-one. Thank you very much, have a great day and weekend.